Hi, I'm Tatum Skipper and welcome to Real Florida Magazine.
Welcome back here today on the beautiful campus of Florida Panhandle Technical College. It's springtime and we know it because in Florida it doesn't snow, it pollens. We get up in the morning and the cars are covered with pollen. If you're like me, you get hit with all those allergies and it's not a pleasant thing, but we're looking forward to the warmer weather certainly. We're here today with another of our series of Meet the Candidates. Here today with Jerry Harrell, a candidate for Washington County School Board District 2. We're going to talk to Jerry when we come back about his background, his education, why he wants to be and serve as your next school board member District 2 in Washington County. We'll be right back. As mentioned, our guest today is Jerry Harrell. Haven't seen you since you retired.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Glad to be here.
Yeah, well, it was good. It's good to have you here. You were a longtime educator here on the campus, as a matter of fact, in the past. For regular viewers of the show, they've certainly seen us do conversations in the old body shop over there.
Yes, sir.
So again, thanks for being here today. We're here because you have recently announced that you have thrown your hat in the ring for Washington County School Board District 2. Wayne Saunders, longtime school board member, decided he would not run this time. Wayne and Carolyn, good friends of the show, have done a lot with them over the years. Jerry, let's talk for a few minutes. Let's start at the beginning. Let's talk about Jerry Harrell, your history, your family, your education, the fact that you did work here as an instructor at Florida Panhandle Technical College, previously Washington Homes Technical Center, and then maybe go into all the reasons why you want to be that next school board member.
Yes, sir. Well, I was born right here in Washington County in 1952, Wesley and Louise Harrell. Grew up just outside of Wausau and attended Chipley High School and graduated from Chipley High School in 1971. And as I was in high school, I came to, at that time it was called the Washington Homes Area Vo-Tech Technical Center, you know, it had a long word on that. And usually that was good when you do a three-minute speech because, you know, that was half of your time right there trying to name the school. What was funny about it, and I was the third graduating class at this center at the auto body program. It was very interesting how I done it because I left high school, come over here and I go, "I'm going to take the first class." I go to, "I'm going to take that program." I don't care what it is, I'm going to walk in the door and I'm going to take that class. Well, lo and behold, it was an auto body program. Never thought I'd end up, you know, doing anything else. I know, I told myself, I said, "My daddy was a carpenter and that was hard work, and he was a farmer and that was hard work." So I had to find something just a little bit easier, but more exciting. So paint and body has been enjoyable. It's been good to me and I've been good to paint and body. Graduated in 1971 from both Chipley and at that time the Tech Center. Went on to the Navy. Joined the Navy in 1974, served on USS Jesse L. Brown. I was the liquid load control officer, which is another term for oil king. My responsibilities there was to take on fuel oil, test all the water treatment, the ash rot launcher, make sure they didn't have any salt water in that. Got out of the service. I was five more years in the Navy Reserve. In 1980, I had an opportunity to come. Mr. Saunders had called me and selected me as the next paint and body instructor. And February the 20th, 1980, we set on another adventure in life. And I tell you, I did not know the work that the teachers have done or had to do behind the, off the sidelines or behind the network or whatever, but they have to do a lot of hard work. You know, it was pleasure being a student. I just do what I'm told to do. But the enjoyment, you know, that excitement, you know, because if you're going to be a teacher, either you are a teacher that is in education or you have the education in you that deepens. And it's so exciting to take a young person's mind that, "Oh, I know a vehicle, I know that's a car, that's a truck." But take them to the stages of learning step by step how to repair something, how to do something, and at the very end, they get to look at a finished product that they go, "Wow, man, I did that." And you encourage them. As a teacher here, you know, for 35 years, I had the pleasure of meeting great parents, great kids. Some kids, you know, were challenging. But you know what? You can't always have, you can't eat it too. I welcome the challenge to it because it brought a little bit more out of me. Maybe I'm at my pinnacle right now, but you get another student in there that wants you to go a little bit higher. And so it's so exciting that we have our young generation that want more. And when they want more, you give them more. And I've always worked late in the afternoons preparing for the next day class. Always wanted my class, when they came in, they knew that their instructor was ready for them, their program was ready, and they always knew that I cared about them. Always spent, my philosophy was this, when I looked at, when I went through school, at all the great teachers and good teachers that I had, what could I do different than what they did? And so I purpose in 35 years that I was going to take five minutes of teaching time and to meet with every one of my students and talk about something other than education. What did you do? What do you think about? You know, who you dating, who you seeing, or what did you do this weekend? I wanted them to go away knowing that their teacher loved them and cared about them, and they were more than just students because they were Jerry's kids when they walked in that classroom. So 1980 to May the 31st, I retired teaching.
35 years.
35 years. Well, I married Sue Hicks, that's Reverend Corbin and Idomer Hicks's youngest daughter. They lived in Wausau. We got married in June the 12th of 1980. She graduated from the LPN class June the 16th.
From here.
From here.
From this campus.
At the LPN from this class. So all my, you know, people ask me, "What do you think about this Tech Center?" And I tell them, I said, "I have over 22 of my personal family members have went through this school, and if I expanded it, I would have over 30." This is what the center means to me. The center's been good to my family and my family's been good to the center. And one good, interesting fact, ever since 1967, I've had a family member to work at this center and up to, I think, five of us at one time. So we have a great connection and a great, because it's just not my passion for education. My entire family, it has that great compassion for the students. And they see students like I do. Hey, they're my kids. When they're with me, they're with me. And they're my kids, my responsibility to take care of them. So then I retired in the 2015, May 31st, went out kicking. I asked Ms. Compton, "Could I stay a little bit longer?" You know, I wasn't ready to give it up because the last five years in my education, I had talked to people and I go, "You know what? I love teaching, but there is something inside me that I really have a heart's desire to reach more than just 30 students at a time." I wanted to go be able to be put in a position that I can have an influence on several students, you know, hundreds of students or whatever. And so at that time, I thought I was going to be the next guidance counselor, you know, when I retire, and come back in a year and be a guidance counselor and to be able to work with. But this opportunity has been given to me and I'm going to take advantage of it. I'm going to represent the kids, the faculty, the staff of all the schools, and most of all the parents and keep them informed and let them understand that my heart is with them on their kids and provide them with the best education that's possible. So now I'm back on the trail, running for a school board too, and it's been exciting talking to people, listening to them. I've been listening more than I've been talking. And you know, my daddy always told me, "Keep your mouth shut and ears open and you'll learn a whole lot."
Do you feel that it's necessary for a candidate for the school board to have been an educator?
Yes, I do because you get to see what goes on actually in the classroom. As a classroom instructor, I have spent late hours getting ready for the next day. That means that I have to look for tools and equipment. I have to find out what tools and equipment that my kids are going to have to use in the industry, so I have to spend time looking at that. Without someone actually knowing exactly what goes on, the teacher plans, the lesson plans, they do all the preparation, the lab work, they have to do all their budgeting. So all these things are actually what the school board has done, I've already done for the last 35 years and enjoyed it.
We live in challenging times when you talk about budgets.
Yes, sir.
When you talk about fiscal challenges. In Washington County, not unlike Jackson and Holmes County, which border us, around a third of the people, or a little less than a third of the people, pay ad valorem taxes, either due to homestead exemptions or to the fact that they don't own property. So school budgets are challenged and we have to accept a lot of our funding from the state. Because of that, we have to jump through the hoops that the state puts up there. Everything from curriculum to testing and so forth. Much of that stuff, which we like to gripe about, but at the end of the day, we have to realize that when you take food from that table, you have to abide by the rules of that home. So there are several issues that arise because of funding challenges. One that we like to talk about with candidates for either superintendent of school or school board is school resource officers, SROs. In Washington County right now, I believe we have three SROs for all of our schools. That means that not every school has one and that were there to be an active shooter scenario or something of equal emergency purposes, that it would be a long response time to be able to get help there.
Right.
What, if any, opportunities do you feel that we have to enhance our funding so that maybe somewhere down the road, we could look at maybe having at least that one SRO at every one of our public schools?
Well, without me being on the board, you really don't know the finances laid aside. As a budget, a lot of our equipment that I had to purchase for our kids had to come through grants, and yet you did have to meet the qualifications. But you know, we are going to have to look at quit spending dimes and start spending dollars on our kids now because we got a new generation of kids. We are in a new generation of environment, work availability and all, so we are in a great challenge. Several years ago, I believe it was in the late 80s, early 90s, what happened was the state of Florida, the education budget was like 30% of the budget. And then the prison system was more like about 18 to 15% at that time. And so what had happened, they decided, "Let's reverse that." So they started switching the prison system, saying, "Hey, we need to build more prisons because our students are going to be more prison-ready than they are work-ready." And so the budgets got switched around and the school got the short end of the stick. And so since that time, the school has, especially the school board, has to struggle trying to get the right amount of funds to give to each class or each teacher what they need or each school. And a lot of times, we're going to have to go buy and get grants. Now, in my program, all the equipment that I bought had to come through a program. It had a grant. And so we wrote up the grant, we would get it. But every time I had bought something, I'd always look at, "Okay, this is piece of equipment I need. This is what I need to teach this. This is why I need it." And then when I do it, I'd go look and get the prices. And I'd sit back and look at it, and then what I would do before I'd turn in that request, there's certain requests for them, I would try to talk myself out of it. Why do I need it? You know? And the most question is, how many of my students are going to be able to use it? Because we have to be price conscientious, but we also have to say, "We got to get bang for our bucks and we need to buy the equipment that our students, our whole students will be able to participate, work on something and learn on something." So yeah, but the schools are really are backed against the wall, and I'm hoping in the next two or three years that we're going to see some financial turnaround here. But like I said, we won't know until somebody gets in there, gets into the budget, looks at what we got. We only see the aftermath. We don't get to see what the superintendent and all the board members have to do.
The last several superintendents and members of the school board in Washington County have diligently worked. Here in the last couple of years, the Florida legislature's granted us $26 million for a brand-new Kate Smith Elementary School. You could not argue that the need was not there after 30 years. And if you look at the original school, you can tell why we're definitely in dire need of a new school. That said, what do you see as the next big capital improvement that Washington County school system is going to need?
What we do is make sure we focus on and finish the project that we got at Kate Smith. You know, a lot of times, we can start a project, we get 90% done, we'll jump on something else, and really that 10% takes longer to complete than it did build a whole school. Once we get everything we need at Kate Smith, we need to start looking at Vernon High School, Vernon Middle School. Okay, Vernon Middle School, if you'll remember, it actually started with a combination of Wausau School that was moved to Vernon, and that's how Vernon Elementary School got started. So we need to start looking at Vernon Elementary School and let's see what we can get for them, the property-wise, get it all, and see what kind of grants that we need. And let's start focusing on Vernon Elementary because, you know, our kids are the precious that we have and that they need to be provided with the best school education, get ready for the college, get ready for the Tech Center, whatever. If they're not college-minded, we need to make sure they're in career-minded because there are a lot of them, as you know, 25% of all the students that graduate now go on to college. And then 50% of that, which is 12 and a half percent, they actually finish college. We need to start tapping in to find out, number one, is why these 12 and a half percent, why can't we reach them? Why didn't we go wrong or what can we do to help them? Then the other percentage, majority of it, we need to get them career-minded in school and help them. So there's some things that we need to start looking at that down the road, but also right now, at this opportunity, to start enhancing the students that we got in school.
I'm glad that you say that because you sort of anticipated my next question. We're enjoying arguably what we call now laughingly, in some cases, the boomerang generation. About a third of our kids are moving back home to live with mom and dad after they graduated four-year college. They're moving back and part of what they're bringing home to mom and dad is $120,000 worth of school debt. And it's arguably in a situation where they have no marketable skills.
Yes, sir.
Governor Rick Scott was here a few years ago, right here at Matilda's Restaurant on the campus, and I asked him the same question and he said, "I'm glad that you asked me that, Paul. My daughter just graduated from the University of Florida with an anthropology degree and is living at home because she can't find a job." That said, I know that you're a little jaded, you're a little bit prejudiced because of the fact that you worked here for so many years. What do you feel about the importance of technical colleges and the fact that within a year, they give the opportunity to a young adult or to an older adult who's simply retooling their life? The opportunity to immediately go out and get a well-paid job in the real world, for sure, within that first year?
Yes, sir. In fact, as when I was hired in 1980 as a teacher, I worked five, taught five-day classes. I taught two-night classes. I went to college one night a week. I paid as I went and helped raise three kids on top of that. So I was constantly on the go. And I believe that we can get our kids career-minded. We need to do something, a career evaluation instrument, so that we, like in the 10th grade, we can give the kids an instrument to let them take, and that will score them the top three interests that they have. And we can start focusing their education on that. Now, technical education is really a lifesaver to me. It's caused me to have a lot, make a lot of money. I made a lot of money doing paint and body work before I could become a teacher. But if we can instill, get those students on a career-minded goal and a career-minded course. So one thing they actually need in our schools today, I believe, is a career. We have the great guidance counselors in our school, but they are so overworked and overloaded, they can't just reach everybody. You know, a teacher, they're going to do 25, 30 students. Guidance counselor, they may have to do 300, 400, 500 students. So they're overloaded. If we can get a career guidance counselor there that'll help support the guidance counselor that got in there, and let's get these kids on a career path. Now, they go to the technical school, technical college now, they're able in a whole year, maybe 12, 14 months, they're coming out with work skills ready for the market. In fact, while they're at the Tech Center, what they do is they're actually on the job training. They're students that are put in a real-life work atmosphere, exactly what they're going to have to do out in the field, they're going to do in their shop, in their classroom. So that's what's a great step as our students are learning. They have the excitement and the joy that, "Hey, what I'm doing now is preparing me for tomorrow." And then when they leave here, people, the employers out in the community already know the technical training that our students receive here, and that's why we're rated the number-one technical college in the state of Florida. But good thing, since 1967, this center has been in the top five technical programs in the whole state. So you say, when you look at the technical college here now, what are we doing right? We're doing hard work. We've committed to our students to make sure we provided the best student available and the best employee out there for the market. And that's been a success, and I think if we can gear and focus a lot more of our ideals and training on them, we're going to change this market around. But until we start shifting and seeing companies come back to America, as you know, back in early 2000s or somewhere in that, what happened, we lost a lot of shops and we lost a lot of dealerships, especially Chrysler. A lot of them had to go close up. We've seen a lot of regulations come out that has hurt body shops and hurt other shops and all. Regulations is really stifling the employment, but I believe we're going to see it in the next two years. We're going to see a great turnaround, you know? We can't stay on a slide. We're going to be on up. And I believe you're going to see in the next two years a great change in the employment.
A couple of things, and not to beat to death the technical college aspect, but a couple of things that bear discussing. One is dual enrollment. I think that that's probably one of the singularly least taken advantage of aspects. At no cost to the parent or the child, a high school student can come here, dual enroll, they sometimes graduate from these classes before they even graduate high school. The most important part of that, to my way of thinking, is if they do indeed go to a four-year college, they've got a trade where they can make a decent living to help support them through college versus flipping burgers. Nothing wrong with flipping burgers.
You're right.
What are your thoughts on that dual enrollment?
Right. That's probably the greatest thing because I was one of the dual-enrolving students. I came three hours a day the first year, came three hours a second. The first year, we were in the morning, second year, we were in the afternoon. I believe that's one asset that has not been fully utilized in our school system. I believe, and as soon as we can get our career counselors into our school, if we can get them into our school and start tapping into those resources and letting everyone understand what we're actually doing with dual enrollment, we're not taking funds, what we're doing is taking that student and getting them ready. Now, they want to go to college. When they leave the technical college here with a certification, graduation, they can go and pay as they go. You know, when we went to college, you had to go to campus. When now, all they got to do is get a computer, they're going to college from home. So actually, when they learn a trade, get a career going, they are able to work and fit college into their work schedule. Number one, they won't have a debt. They'll pay as they go. They can take two or three colleges a week, courses a week. According to their finances, they can actually do the college. And when they get through, they're free. They don't owe $100,000. They can look around, "This is what I accomplished in the last two or three years." Of course, it's going to take them a little longer as we know that. It all depends on how hard they want to dedicate and how quick they want. But yet they'll be debt-free, and we really need to show our kids a better way to get a college education. It's okay to take a break, like I did. I took courses, I had to take a break for a little bit. I continued working, got the finances, went right back to college and finished what I was. I got my certification of vocational education for the University of West Florida. So that dual enrollment is the most important asset that we got to tap into and utilize. I mean, we've really got to get our students involved with that.
The second of the two points that I think bear discussion again, we've got a very proactive, aggressive director here at the school, Martha Compton. And the thing I like to focus on with her is she's going to businesses and saying, "Tell us the skills that you need. We will teach our students the skills necessary to get jobs in your plant," versus going to a plant saying, "Hey, we've got a welder that knows how to do this. Where can you fit them?" We're going to the business saying, "What do you need? Let us teach the skills necessary." I would dare say that's a huge opportunity.
In fact, that's what I did for 35 years. The state came out with our curriculum. This is what I need you to teach. And so what I did, I said, "Okay, we're going to do that." We did our lesson plans, focused on that. But I went to the several body shops in our area and I asked them that very question. I said, "Look, I need to know," and I took them, took them everything the curriculum with them, let them look at it. So I said, "Tell me what I need to teach my student for you to hire them." And so what we did was, we got all that information and we put it down. And what we did was, our heart or our center focus was those things that they needed. They not needed, but had to have to be considered for that job. And so we put them down and then we built everything else around it. And what we did was, every time we got to an exit point or a completion point, we'd go back to the nucleus and focus on that to bring that skill level. It's like typing, you know, if you ever took typing course, you type one word a minute, you know, hunt and pick and all this, and then you do two words and then you go fast and you keep going and keep going and build that up, well, the same way we do in technical education. That is ideal, the premier of what we need to do. Our business, if they're going to hire our students, they must have something to say of how we need to train our students, and that had worked for 35 years.
A couple of years ago, we asked the voters in Washington County to give us a half-cent sales tax. The reason for that was due in large part to something we already alluded to, which is the state mandates of online testing. Because of the one-to-one ratio of devices to students in primary education and because of testing having to be done online, the bandwidth is just huge that's required. It was turned down by the voters at that time. At the end of the day, I, as a taxpayer, the last thing I want is more taxes. But you pointed out that we need to start looking at education a little bit more holistically, a little differently. We need to look at it certainly differently than our parents did.
Yes, sir.
Because of the value of that and because of the fact we are losing jobs and those children, those adults, young adults, have to be trained. All that said, do you feel that going forward, that that half-cent sales tax or some other vehicle is going to probably be necessary in order to enhance that funding that's going to be required to be able to step up to that next level in our education?
Yes, sir. I believe maybe the setback on that two-cent tax was, we might should have...
Half-cent.
Half-cent, excuse me. Half-cent tax was, I think we should have had a better educational process out there, notifying all the voters out there, all the people, personnel that's in Washington County, let them know that ahead of time. You know, maybe a year or so in advance. I don't know how quick they got that out, but I believe if we understand, we have people out there in the community, it's got to stop believing that we can teach students with a penny. We can't do it. It's got to have a dollar. We're going to have to. Because of the homestead exemption and all these things that really cut back on some taxes now, now you know, everybody said it, we're going to pay for it down the road. Now, down the road is here, and so we're going to have to come up with some new ways of collecting money to finance our school. We cannot fail our students at the moment of breaking time. You know, we just got to go on, dig deeper, you know? If we want, "Oh, man, I want my kid to have the best education." Well, I want my son's daughter, my grandkids, all this, that's exciting. You know, that's good. Oh, yeah. But when it comes time to pay the fiddle, you know, wait a minute. Now, no, we've got to get in a different, we got to get out of the box, thinking the same way we did for years. We've got to come up, we've got some of the fantastic teachers, they got ideals yet to even be discovered in, and bring all that forth. And I believe that we are going to have to put that half-cent tax back up or some other, that's the only way, because the public has benefited from what has been taken away and now it's time to pay up and let's get. Our kids, I have to ask ourselves, is our kids less important than a half-cent sale tax? They're not. They're not. And I believe that that's the way we're going to have to do. We're going to have to start the revenue like that and reintroduce that, but a lot of earlier stage in the year. So the people, and keep them informed, you know, keep it going, let people understand why we're doing that.
Jerry, when somebody enters the political arena, and in your case, running for the first time for a political office, usually there's a reason for it. If they're running against an incumbent, it's because they feel they could do something better or that something isn't being done improperly that they can help to remedy. In your case, you're running for a vacant seat. Wayne Saunders, longtime board member in District 2 seat, decided to retire, so you're not running against anybody. That said, when you wake up in the morning, that first day as the school board member, you're going to be looking at a totally different world from what you do today. There are going to be challenges, probably that you don't even know about in some cases, but what do you feel will be some of those main challenges that we face as Washington County? And how do you feel your background and your abilities, your skill sets, allow you to address those challenges?
One thing that we know about the finances, so we don't really have to cover that. One thing is my experience in a classroom observing how students grow in the classroom. I can bring, you know, when you haven't been in the classroom for a few years or several years, you lose that continuity there. You lose that understanding really what goes on in that classroom. So as a teacher here, just retired, I'm going to be able to bring more clarification in there, how we can better meet our children's needs while they're in school, be able to run a correspondence between the board and the students and the faculty and the parents of all, that I believe that I'll be able to bring a better understanding and better knowledge in that because I've just come out of retirement, getting into politics for the first time. I believe that's the most important thing we got to do, is we got to be representative of the students in our classroom and show the difference of how they're growing. As a teacher, I notice every year that the demeanor of our students would change a little bit and that every five years, that the students would go through a transformation a whole lot different than we start again. So I believe I'll be able to bring a better understanding of how students go through their class, how they study and what their needs are and how to meet them.
Is there anything else that you would add? We've spoken about our financial problems. Obviously, that's gonna be a problem that we always have. We've talked a little bit about your specifics, your background, your reasons for running for office. Is there anything else that you would add? Is there anything else that you would like for our viewers or listeners to know about you or anything that you would like to discuss?